Good evening. It is August 21st. It is 6:30 PM and with a full diocese, I am calling us to order. The first item that we will do is citizens' comments. Madam Secretary, do we have anyone signed up for citizens' comments? We have Herb Goldsmith signed up, but he is not here. So we may, I believe we all got an email from him and he indicated he may not make it tonight. So I would encourage, has anybody not read Herb's email? Okay, well, if he comes in, we'll let him have a talk, but we will consider citizens' comments closed at this time. Thank you, Madam Secretary. And the item on the agenda that we'll go to now is the only one that is under work session, which is discuss the proposed fiscal year 2020 budget and provide feedback to staff. And the CFO, Ms. Waldron, has talked with me a little bit earlier today and I know she prepared two documents. And we had a question about the innovative fund and you've all gotten a packet about, an updated packet that shows a starting budget. She also has a handout about other charges and she also has a handout about transfers. So when she got those all handed out, I'll let her visit, kind of walk us through both of those handouts. And everybody got in their book the new innovation fund and then we'll talk about that, if that's okay. And Ms. Waldron, I really appreciate you preparing this in such a short time. Do you have a preference of which one you do first? I don't really care.
All right, we will just go over the other first, since that was brought up last night, and then I can go over the transfer. So what I did on the other expense category includes, I told y'all last night, I would prepare kind of all of the miscellaneous line items that actually fall underneath that category. And then at the bottom, it's not all of the dollar amounts on those others, but it's kind of the big component. So for instance, in legislature, under the other category, there's a travel and training for $15,500. So I've prepared some of those off expenditures for y'all so that y'all can see what is driving that other category. So if y'all have any questions about any of those items, we can talk about those.
What is overhead allocation?
Overhead allocation is the amount that comes in from other funds, like water, wastewater, and BP&L and the hot funds, that covers administrative costs from the general fund. So instead of it being a transfer in, the accounting rules require that it be an offset of expense, which is why it's a large credit. So it offsets general fund expenses.
So you haven't put everything into this, right?
I just picked out the big items.
Okay.
So that you would see what's kind of driving those totals. I didn't do every fund. If it was a couple thousand dollars, I did not highlight it on this one.
And councilmember, if there's a specific line item or fund that you have a question about that she's not addressed, we're happy to provide any level of detail that you have an interest in seeing.
On the, on the, the hot fund for BIP, is that in that, in their total of the money that we give them? Or is that in a different amount?
I'm not sure of the question.
You have listed under your other category, hot funds to BIP?
That's, that's in their budget.
She was asking if it was on top of or if it was included in. It's included in and it's just the other line, it's $14,000 of the other line item.
It's just one of the big items that's under that other category.
No, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure it wasn't on top of what they were, what you had in here as their total.
No.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Everybody, does this, y'all are looking, let me...
This is just addressing, excuse me, this is just addressing the question that came up last night about some of the items that were labeled as other and what you've done is just picked out the big items you're saying from that, so that we'll know what those other ones are correct.
Yep.
What is, I got a question for you, if it's not on here.
Would you lean into the mic a little bit more?
What's 180? 186,130 or, what is that? And it's not on the sheet, but it's the convention center. And I don't need to keep that picture up. Contract services?
Contract services.
I mean, they have several, but I know they have a mowing contract. I know they have a contract with their website and like, public relations, someone that produces their documentation. They also, oh, I know another big item under that one is, it's a pass-through for the catering event. So anytime an event comes in and wants them to provide the catering and do the ordering and everything, even though we collect a fee for it, it's an offset to that. There's an expense related to going out and paying that vendor for that catering. Because we're not, we're not letting them do it or we're not, we're doing it for them as concierge service.
Got you.
So, yeah.
Okay.
That's probably a good sized chunk of that.
Ms. Waldron, for example, the Hunter's Crossing line that you have there, it shows an expenditure of $911,000. That's going to be reimbursed with the assessments at Hunter's Crossing residence. We just, they just haven't realized.
Yeah, it's the capital portion.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, I don't want to rush anybody, but I got accused of belaboring things last night, so whenever, when we get the heads up, Mr. Peterson's saying, "I'm done talking about other," but he's only one of five, so where are the rest of you?
That was an answer to my questions. I just wanted it not to be just kind of vague, so. I do think, I do think for the public's knowledge, that maybe we should have, you know, something in the glossary or something that explains what other is, so they understand what other is.
You, he raised a very good point, and so what we will do in reference is we will create a legend, if you will, of the types of things that are in the categories, like personnel is salary, TMRS, medical, health, those kinds of things. What would be in supplies would be these types of things. And so I think from an open and transparent perspective, that's a very good thing to put there. And so we will add that before it's finally adopted and we'll put it in the reference section.
Thank you. I just think it will keep anybody from just wandering off of where it might be.
And it'll also remind us next year, you know, it'll be already established. Councilmember Ennis, you have a concerning face.
Next year. Would it be a horrible amount of work to provide us like tear sheets, like you've done here along, I mean, not part of the budget, but something that kind of heads off our questions like this, details of the other?
We can certainly do that. I will tell you that this year, because we're using this as a bridge, we didn't spend much time on that second year. So we're happy to, to tell you what's in there, but just because it's in there doesn't mean it'll be in there when you get it next year.
No, 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 no. What I'm saying is...
You're looking for more detail.
I'm looking for more detail on these kind of hard-to-describe areas, so that you're not facing us going, "What is this?" next year, in a document that would not be part of the big book.
When you provide us this book next year, can somebody go through and do the biggest items and tell us what they are?
Thank you for translating, Mayor. Yes, sir. Consider it done.
She was hearing, "I need you to anticipate what I'm going to ask you and tell me the answer," and that wasn't what he was saying. He was like, "I understand this is for FY '19. When you know FY '20, if we could get that, it would be helpful and keep us from wondering it and playing this find the..." Right?
Might cut this down to one night instead of two.
Okay.
Ooh!
Throwing down the gauntlet.
We're going to put four check marks by there, so thank you.
That was Councilman Peterson's idea.
Efficiency. One thing I want to talk about, the legislative $15,500, from Councilmember Rogers' point of view, that's, that's travel and training for this council. That's what that is.
And we have something we're going to pass out that tells you exactly what that is.
Thank you, because I wanted, I wanted all of us to be clear that there are only, there are some standards, like I believe, according to the records, the first and only time in the history of the city of Bastrop, every single council member and the city manager attended the TML conference last year, the annual conference. So that is not something that historically would have been budgeted over the last five or 10 years. That is definitely something that happened last year and something that we fully anticipate will happen again this year. And so they have listed the things that are included. So we all go to the Region 10 meetings. We are planning on, and I believe for the public to be aware, the TML annual conference, the registration has already occurred and we are all signed up to go, so that, that is already taking place. There is a TML elected officials conference that sometimes, many of us go, but not always every single person goes, but we've budgeted for that. The legislative wrap-up may or may not, it'll depend on what happens with resolutions and where things are going. Newly elected city officials, we have, every year, we, the three of us went the first year that we were elected. I know that Drew went her year. Councilmember Jackson is certainly not a newly elected official. He is certainly well-versed in that, so, but there's, there has been an effort to cover the conferences that we would cover. I mentioned last night that I was at a Water Alliance conference. That conference was in Austin and because I was an elected official, my registration was free. So there's, there's not an unlimited budget and we need to be aware of that. Does council have anything that they don't see on here that they think should be covered? We, I think, I'm sorry, and we are, we were talking about going back and revisiting our travel policy, but we're not going to try to do that tonight.
We can get it and hand it out, but that wasn't the plan. I would suggest that it be workshopped at an upcoming work session.
And that's what I meant, in the, in the future, will we do that?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, Councilmember Jackson?
No, I was just, for, for TML, when we have our annual conference, as a, as a board member, as you are as well, my registration is comped by TML.
Yep.
But the other expenses are not comped, and I just wanted to make sure that those were, are those included in this, or?
Yes, that's the intention. Yeah.
And the other board meetings that are involved as well?
Well, for next year, the, there'll be two meetings in Austin and one meeting in San Marcos, so there won't be a need to spend the night. There won't be any hotels. And those meetings are already scheduled.
To answer your question, the Region 10 meetings are typically dinner and there's no overnight accommodations for that. TML annual conference includes hotel accommodations and the per diem for food. The elected officials, I believe, and includes hotel, because it's often an overnight somewhere else. The legislative wrap-up is always held in Austin. The newly elected city official is typically somewhere and it's multi-day, so hotel and food would be available in that, to answer your question.
Okay, so, good, so far, so good. Everybody's okay? We keep going? All right, Ms. Waldron, let's go to your next wonderful piece of paper that's going to shed light on our...
Yeah, so this is actually a report that the auditors include in our comprehensive annual financial report, so I thought it would be helpful in this situation as well. So it kind of highlights for you the transfers out and the transfers in between the funds, so that you can kind of see which fund is giving the other fund money. And if you have any particular questions...
There's so few line items, why don't you just walk through them?
Okay, so, starting on the left, so general fund gives $283,000, almost $39,000 to hot funds. That is the portion of multimedia and reservation departments. We participate in their budgets because they are not all hot-funded. On innovation fund is transferring back into the general fund, $198,000, and that is to bring general fund up to the 25%, which is part of what changed in your book tonight. I just went ahead and made more clarity on the innovation fund, showing that transfer back in to keep the general fund whole.
So let me explain that, because that happens anyway. The auditors roll the innovation fund into the general fund as a matter of purpose. But for purposes of open and transparency, I don't want that to be an asterisk for you to have to remember. So she's just going to put it back where it is, and the innovation fund then will function exactly as it is intended. The innovation fund was created for one-time revenue to buy one-time things. The problem when you get into performance measures and using your historical budget as a metrics, if there's anything in a reoccurring budget that's one-time, screws up your metrics. And you always have to remember what that one thing was. So we solve that by anytime we have a one-time something, we just put that one-time money in the innovation fund. And then that one-time thing is there. Every year, we do a reconciliation, like we're doing with you, and we all know what those one-time projects were. So today, when we got to talking about the question, we're back to that governmental accounting. There's an awful lot of things we do that aren't logical, but those are the rules, so you do them. So they roll the innovation fund up into the fund balance of the general fund. And so the fund balance in the innovation fund is counted as fund balance in the general fund, and that's by design. So to just keep it clean, the innovation fund won't retain a fund balance unless there is a specific project that it's dedicated for. And the $198,000 that's going back in to the general fund was unallocated things. It's the SCBA equipment we didn't buy. It's those kinds of things. So it just keeps it clean and we don't always have to have the asterisks to explain, "Well, what did you do with the money?" Well, we put it back where it came from.
So council, I think it would be a really great idea at this point if you turn to page 207 in the updated package that you got tonight. It is the Innovation Fund Reconciliation, page three. It's page number 207. You don't have what? No, it's definitely updated, because, because now it says ending fund balance. So last year, because, and Tracy and I talked earlier, we believe the first fiscal year that had an innovation fund was fiscal year '18. And so in '18, they took one-time monies from different places and had a long list of projects, and they were planning on spending $2.2 million. It's actually two, as Tracy would say, $2,195,242.
Probably what it was.
Because that's what it was. It looks like we are only going to spend, and I not say only, but of the 2.1, we're going to be spending about 1.5. So that meant that we, we plan on ending the fiscal year in '19 with $899,000. And the way that you would find that is you'd see that in the far-left-hand column, it was budgeted, but there's nothing projected, and it would be things like the SCBA that we didn't buy the reimbursement. So that, it's just math at that point. So then for next year, they are planning on spending $946,000. And they are, so they've only put into the innovation fund projects they are planning on spending money, so that ideally, if everything goes according to plan and nothing ever goes according to plan, it would be zero at the end of the year. And so that answers those questions like, "What happened to the money that you were going to spend on this project and where, where did that go?" So I, when Tracy and I walked through that earlier, I thought that did a really good job of kind of comparing where we were and what we're planning on doing. Did this help? Uh-oh, Mr. Ennis says no.
You know my brain, it doesn't work this way, so you can't, you can't fix it tonight. I'll meet with Tracy.
Okay.
I've got to see it in front of me. I'm not audio, I'm visual.
And, and she is real good at walking you through that, so that's great.
But you, but you do have the new packet, so you can look at it, right?
Yeah, I got the same thing, too.
Okay.
The main thing that was added was, I went ahead and added a beginning fund balance and an ending fund balance. There wasn't, that wasn't on the report originally, but I think it helps you see that roll forward for this fund each year or so.
And that'll be a format that we'll do moving forward. Mr. Peter, Councilmember Peterson?
I just want to make a comment. I am really enjoying this budget process and Tracy, you're super. So we're going to give you a big ass. The reason I'm making this comment, because I did budget for the feds for many, many years, and it was really tough for me to understand why the federal government did that. At the end of the fiscal year, you had to hurry up and spend everything you had on whatever you could spend it on. And I'm glad to see this process working.
Has some logic to it.
Yes.
Okay, Councilmember Ennis said he'll meet with Ms. Waldron tomorrow. Councilmember Peterson's okay?
Not tomorrow, I'll meet with her.
Or in the future, sorry, in the future. Councilmember Jackson, you're okay? Councilmember Rogers? Oh, go, jump in, jump in.
Since you're on the innovation fund, on the six, I'm going to show it up right one, remodeling the city hall, we had the $300,000 planned and $165,000. The way this looks, does that mean we're planning another $300,000? Or is that the same one, we just haven't spent it yet?
So, we haven't spent it yet.
Okay.
So what that means is, is of the $465,000, we're going to spend $300,000 after October 1. So it'll be a carryover that you do the last budget item on, on the agenda on the 25th. That's when we reconcile all the things we know we're not going to finish and we have to reallocate the money. So of the $465,000, we anticipate we'll reallocate $300,000 after October 1, so that we can complete the project.
I thought that's what it was. I was just making sure.
Yes, ma'am.
Good, good question. And they are underway. Come visit us during the day. You won't wonder if they're underway. Mayor Protem Nelson? All right, all right. Now we're going back to the inter-fund transfers and we're on the 2013 bond fund line. Does that, everybody know where we are? All right.
We're transferring out. This, this bond had some leftover money that was, that can be, that it pays for streets, so we're transferring that over to the street maintenance fund.
So the $154,000 was a result of the Alley D project that was done in 2013. And you might recall that, I believe it's $90,000 that is dedicated to the hot box, and the remaining is going to go toward repairing parts of MLK. So if you take the amount allocated for MLK and the hot box, it totals that $154,000.
From the hot fund organizational division, we are transferring $7,500 into the innovation fund. That's their portion of the website. And $514,000 into debt service. That is the convention center bond payment. BP&L is transferring into the general fund.
Ms. Waldron, before you, just so that we all have some good information, because there was a conversation about it last night, that $514,000, $514,416 is the convention center payment for fiscal year '20. She has told me, there was a question last night, there are 12 more years to pay, and in round numbers, although it hurts her to give round numbers, it's about $6 million to pay off the convention center. So that just gives, gets everybody back on the same page, okay? Okay.
BP&L is transferring to general fund, $567,750. Five fifty-seven of that is their contribution to the general fund. Basically, their franchise fee in lieu of taxes that they've transferred every year into general fund. The additional 10 is designated for the Bastrop long-term recovery funding, which is located in the emergency management budget. The $7,500 into the innovation fund is their piece of the website. They are transferring $75,000 into the internal service fund. That is our VERF fund, so that is just transferring in there for...
VERF stands for Vehicle Equipment Replacement Fund, V-E-R-F.
Yes, that's just for future equipment replacement. They transfer in there every year, just to build up reserves. The $222,500 into hot funds is...
Christmas lights.
Yeah, it's in the book, but it's covering Christmas lights, homecoming rodeo, Juneteenth, patriotic festival, and I think there may be...
I think that's it.
Nibbles.
Yeah, nibble. So that's what that is. I've listed out all of the, the individual funds that are grouped as water wastewater funds, so the operating fund for water wastewater is transferring their portion of the website into the innovation fund. They are also transferring 1.3 million into the water wastewater debt service fund to fund their debt payments for bonds. And 1 million into the capital funds, this is excess over their 35% fund balance requirement into the capital fund to go towards offsetting future water wastewater projects.
This is the part that makes your head hurt. It's all water and wastewater and it's just swapping around buckets.
Transferring in between the funds. And so I'm taking out 2 million of excess in the debt service fund and putting it into the capital fund to go towards projects. And the logic there is originally, we thought we needed to build up debt service fund balance to handle the new requirement for the debt reserve on our new revenue bonds. But fund balance does not go towards that, so there is no benefit to us to hoard that fund balance in debt service. It makes much more sense to actually apply it to projects and not bond those projects. So that's what we're, that's the goal with this transfer.
Spend the money you got before you borrow money.
Yes, yes. And, and then the library board transfers into general fund every year, a little bit to cover some interns that they bring in for their summer reading program. I have transfers between the permanent cemetery fund and the operating cemetery fund, that is interest earned, that gets transferred over and used in the operating fund. And then the impact fund transfers into water wastewater debt service fund to cover bond payments. And so those impact fees...
Those are the impact fees, and that's what they're for, so you have to collect them in the impact fee fund and then you have to distribute it so it can be spent the way it was supposed to be spent.
And this can be a page, you know, in the book that just sort of defines and describes all of those transfers in maybe a little bit clearer way.
I thought this was really helpful. Mayor Protem Nelson, helpful?
Very.
Everybody's, all right. Yay, Tracy. Good job, good job. Okay, those were her two, turned into three handouts. You have your updated book and some of, some of those numbers you'll find in some of the pages that she updated, that transfer out of the innovation fund, you know, she's got to track it all the way back through, so that's why you have some of the others that change. One of the question, I'm kind of going through the questions that I had last night, and then I know some of you have brought new ones, but I was, I was trying to kind of keep us organized as best I could. Community support, as I mentioned last night, some folks asked for in-kind services. That information was provided. In order for them to finish, are there any community support funds that somebody would like to change or amend? It is on page 89.
My feeling is it's very fair.
Hearing silence, their staff's not going to change anything. Everybody okay?
There's no reason to change this document.
No, I agree.
Okay.
It's good.
All right, done. Do you want to talk about the rodeo? Do I want to talk about the rodeo? Do you want me to talk about it? Well, it was on, it was on the list. We can or we can't, I don't care.
So what I will tell you is, it is put in the work plan. My suggestion would be... My suggestion would be, is in October, I will bring it back for a work session discussion. Y'all can collectively provide me some policy oversight on what you'd like to see. You can give me direction on how you'd like that to work, and we can take it from there. As I indicated to Councilmember Rogers, there is money allocated in organizational that's what we call an opportunity fund. In the hot world business, there's always something that comes up that you can't plan for, so you have a pot of money to do something with. So, there's money to do a study. There's a thought that there needs to be a study, there's a thought there doesn't need to be a study. I don't care. So, I'm gonna bring it to work session and let y'all clearly define for me what a win-win-win looks like in the context of the rodeo, and when we will execute it. And that way, I can make sure I've got appropriate political direction to execute the orders that I get. And that's what I think I've heard, what it's been requested, and we'll do that in the October, November timeframe.
And that sounds just fine to me. I just know that it's a park that the city owns, so I just would like to see the city pay some attention to it, one way or the other, whatever we decide to do, just so it's not something that we don't pay attention to. We own it, so we need to own up to it.
And I'd like to leverage the Parks Board and get some feedback from them. Councilmember Jackson, it is a park, and I would think that that board needs to be involved in that, and that needs to be a part of their strategy. So, I would not want to bypass the very board that we've told is.
So, Mayor, is that a direction for us to have a conversation with them before it gets to you? Or do you wanna debate it and offer some direction back to them on how to wrestle with it?
That's a good question. Do you?
Maybe a joint meeting, joint workshop with them?
We can have a rodeo workshop and do a joint meeting with the Parks Board.
Sounds like a plan.
Sounds good. I mean, as the liaison for parks, I'll, whatever you need me to do, I'll be glad to help with that.
Did it come up, has it come up at the Park Meeting last time?
Our Park Meeting was at the same time as some other meetings, and so we didn't, we didn't have, um, I haven't been to a Parks Board meeting yet.
Oh, well, maybe this will get you going.
Yes.
All right, okay, terrific. Let's do that. And if something, I mean, it's not etched in stone. If we decide to do something different, fine, but that, at least we have a strategy to move forward. Everybody comfortable with that?
Quick question.
Yes, sir.
Where have we put the Parks, I mean, the rodeo arena before? Has it been in the parks, or has it been in another?
So, it has been in the hot funds, because I believe there was some special legislation that was approved that allowed hot funding to manage the rodeo arena. This is a complex challenge, and there's some history that I'm not interested in going into tonight, which is why I want some policy direction. It's a challenge. At the end of the day, this is important to an aspect of our community, and it has never risen to a place that I could put it above wastewater, water, and some other things. So, we now have the capacity to deal with it. This council needs to weigh in on what that looks like, so that the rodeo can be an asset to this community as you determine what that asset looks like. And that's the policy direction that we need to have, that I think needs to happen before it goes to the Park Board, because there isn't any. So, it can go from nothing to, whoa, that's not really what we thought we wanted.
That's a good point. So, we may need to workshop it first.
I think we ought to workshop it first, because I've read those contracts, and there's some stipulations and twists and turns in there that.
Well, and there's also some end dates, ain't there?
So, I think there's some serious things we have to deal with before we call Parks.
Okay, great. So, council would like to workshop it, whether we have a special meeting or we just do it as a workshop, whenever it fits into the calendar, we'll do that. And then, because it's not fair to hand something to the Parks Board, and then they come back and we go, well, that's not what we wanted, we're not gonna agree to. That wastes everybody's time. Okay. Thank you, Mayor Protem Nelson, for asking that question. And knowing that there are parts of it, if given a certain way, could make them have access to hot funds, that would change the strategy of how we might handle it going forward as well. Okay, good. Everybody, everybody cool with that? All right, I get a picky question. I'm kinda jumping around. I'm on page 299. And I know this is an accounting thing, sort of. My issue is, and it may be that it wasn't the total fund, it may be a portion, but last year, when we went to this designated fund, we said there's $311,000 for sidewalks. This year, we're saying there's $405,000 for sidewalks, and we didn't collect any more funds from the red light cameras. How'd the number go up? 299.
The lawsuit has been settled, and we had saved some money in the events that we had to participate. And so, when I met with the attorney that was handling that case, in the spirit of being conservative, we didn't spend all the money, but that has been resolved. We have paid the final bill.
So, now we know.
And I believe that would be, you've put that money in sidewalks, because it can now be spent.
Okay, that was, that was part A of my question. Perfect explanation, thank you. I just don't want people to be comparing and saying, how'd the number change? So, now we know why it's 405. Now, the better question, is there a map of sidewalks? And if I'm a citizen and I'm hearing this, I heard last year you were gonna spend 311. Now, I'm hearing you're gonna spend 405. I wanna set expectations of what they'll see in six months and what they can expect to see by this time next year.
So, no, ma'am, there isn't a map, because we are waiting on the adoption of the B-3 codes and the amendment to Chapter 5 of the Thoroughfare Plan of the city's transportation plan.
When do we think that's gonna be done?
So, we, once we get the technical manual reviewed, we get that through y'all in the early September, so we can have the public hearing with P&amp;Z at the end of September, then we will be able to transition more to an implementation perspective. The conversation relative to sidewalks is tied into the $250,000 that we're gonna spend on streetlights. And the end game is that, as we put in sidewalks in North Bastrop, because the commitment was, we were going to resolve pedestrian safety in North Bastrop. And if y'all will recall, I think it was like the second council meeting that I was even city manager, we had a lady that was pregnant at the time that had been hit while she was pregnant with her child pushing a stroller, because there were not sidewalks, and we were all just mortified. So, the commitment from council was that we would start really kind of as Delgado Park, if you will, as the catalyst, and we would work sidewalks to connect the parks and the schools, so that there was connectivity, predominantly in North Bastrop. Recognizing that y'all want to make sure that we have a walkable community, it makes sense that we would do those sidewalks in conjunction to our complete streets, and we would do the sidewalks at the same time. So, what I will pledge to you is that, once we get all of that worked out, before we do anything, we'll bring you the maps, and we'll let y'all weigh in and talk to us about it, and we'll make sure that that money is being invested in the right spot. So, we are all excited about being able to answer that question, because these are game changers that will really improve the quality of life of our residents in North Bastrop. So, just know that's a fall project.
I think that's fantastic, and I think it might be nice if we just added a sentence that said that we, that the plan is, in, by six months, pick a month, pick a quarter, pick a fall. It doesn't have to be specific, but we expect to have a plan submitted to council in early spring, whatever the date is. And everybody okay with that? And then people know that's what we're spending the money on, then that's when we're gonna see it.
I think that's a very good suggestion, because people are gonna wanna know what sidewalks were they gonna be and things like that. And let them know that we're thinking ahead and trying to plan that, I think is an excellent suggestion.
Thank you. Councilmember Rogers?
Hey, Trey.
Hey, Trey.
Not detailed, don't have to give me to the penny or to the inch, but you were saying it was like $400,000 or something. About how many feet of sidewalk should we expect for that, you know, is that 10 feet of sidewalk?
Oh, he's gonna say, how wide is your sidewalk?
Well, just gotta give me a vague.
So, I'm gonna save him from himself. Here's the, here's the challenge. Part of the, part of the, part of the challenge that we have in North Bastrop is there's not necessarily a rhyme or reason to what's there. And so, we're filling gaps. The question that he and I are wrestling with is, do you build to a street that's not there, or do you build to the street that's there? And that's part of the policy conversation that we're going to have with council. Because some of these streets will be designated complete streets, and they'll be designed for something that isn't there. And this plan goes beyond this year and next year. It's a decade, it's a 20-year, 30-year plan. So, he and I have been debating the realities of, do we dare to dream and put it out there and build it? Or do we just fix what's there, so it's better than what it is, and we get more? And so, we're gonna bring you that conversation, because those are policy decisions. But we're vetting the pros and cons of both of those, because there's no wrong answer. So, it's not that easy, and so, I can speak from this, because I asked that same question two or three times before. He said, let me go buy you a coffee, and put me in the truck, and we went and rode around. And so, visually, it's just, it's not, not everything was built to the same spec. And so, it's a complex question, which is why I can't give the mayor the map she wants. We're literally going to have to field survey this, block by block, street by street, and then put some numbers to it and give you a scope of magnitude, and then prioritize this so that the community as a whole sees some benefit. The worst thing we can do is fix two blocks of street for $405,000 in some streetlights. Then they go, you got to be kidding. So, we're gonna make sure that when we spend $405,000 of sidewalks, the community can go, well, that was a smart investment. We got a lot for our money. Just like spending $250,000 on streetlight, I told him, I said, I want us to see it from the satellite in the space. For $250,000, we've lit up North Bastrop. But he reminded me that y'all want dark skies, so we gotta find that balance. So, maybe, you know, from an airplane, not necessarily from the satellite. So, those are all good questions, but they're complex. And so, when we get the bandwidth, we've gotta go wrestle with that, because this is very important money, and it's gonna make a huge difference, and we need to get it right.
Well, thank you, but I just, the conversation in one of the council meetings recently, when Trey told me it was a million dollars to do a mile, I was like, oh, my God, that's not, that's only a mile, and it costs millions. I just wanted to make sure we kinda had a good idea. That sounds like a lot of money, but how far does that actually? So, your expectation of service was right where it was, should be, is what I was hoping.
Councilmember Jackson?
I just wondered if we are looking at the Safe Routes to School, the grants that are available to that. Is, are we trying to use that as a match, or are we hoping to get, I know some other cities are doing that, and.
So, Matt Jones, where are you? I cannot see you behind anybody. Matt has completed a Safe Route to School grant for, I believe it's a mill on MLK. Is that correct, Matt? Turn.
Yeah, it's a Safe Routes to School Transportation Alternative.
So, we are applying for them when they are available in hopes of being able to utilize that as, again, more sidewalk money.
Right. I mean, I know there's some underway currently, and I just wanted to make sure.
No, he's applying for the grant.
Yeah, we've applied.
We have applied. We have a current application in, under review. We've made it through the preliminary approval. One of the things we'll have to bring to you is a resolution approving that. So, we'll do that here in the next couple of meetings.
Right. I just wanted to make sure that we were, you know, since I've been on sabbatical, I guess, or a way, I didn't know if we were doing that still with the Safe Routes to School.
Yes, sir.
And I know our neighboring cities are, and they're also in that same ballpark situation. They're bringing resolutions to their council, so.
Thank you, Councilmember Jackson. Councilmember Peterson?
Yes, I just wanna make a comment that this is not gonna be an easy task, because we have to look at rights of way, there are gonna be trees out there, there's gonna be all kinds of obstacles. So, good luck, guys, and you're gonna need it.
Thank you, Councilmember Peterson, because I was gonna say, even just when we did the pop-up on Main Street, you said there's no wrong answer, and I'm afraid there's no right answer, because we may be trying to do the right thing, and we want it to be a four-foot-wide sidewalk, and somebody's, we've just taken four feet of grandma's flower bed that they've had for 40 years, and they think it's their property, and they've paid their property. So, no, we may find it to be no good deed goes unpunished. So, we ought to have, I think, when you're planning out the costing of it, Trey, it may be one of those where, here's the pretty map, and here's some survey stakes with some tape. This is what we're talking about taking up.
We, I did that with the mayor on Main Street, because part of what I would say to you, Councilmember Peterson, is we're just not gonna cut down trees. And so, I had the mayor go out and just make sure that I wasn't missing something when we were planning the pop-up to help vet the politics. And we can, we can adjust. And it seems to be problematic that we're gonna cut down a tree and then put back a three-inch caliber tree. I mean, that just borderline stupid, that makes me just roll my eyes. So, that would be one of those things that, what you may find is, is that we've done kind of a squarely something around a tree, because we're gonna protect the shade. We, as we have developed, as we have debated the new technical manual that you'll be getting for consideration in November with the B-3 codes, is a provision called 50% shade. Because right now, it's triple-digit heat. We're on day 20-something, and it doesn't matter how many streetlights you have, but if you force people to walk and there's no shade, they're not gonna walk, they're gonna get in the car. So, the only way we can really make walkability work is if you force people to provide shade. And so, it just seems in conflict to our values to cut the trees down. So, I've said a whole lot to tell you, if we're gonna cut trees down, we're gonna have a public conversation about it.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
You know, I think us being cognizant that it's a complicated issue, and we're working to uncomplicate it, so we can, we can pass a decent policy to address all those issues. I mean, it's not just a single-point issue. And I'm very happy to hear that you're pursuing those grant opportunities through the Transportation Alternatives, I think is the new term for it. So, we will be tracking those for sure, so thank you.
All right, on street maintenance, I think it's super easy. We had a plan, things came back really, really high, and we are basically taking year one, putting it together with year two, and hoping to make a shot at it this coming fiscal year. Is that fairly close?
That's absolutely spot-on, and Walker Partners will be here Tuesday night at the August 27th meeting to give you alternate three. So, not only have we tried it once, we've tried it twice. And so, they're gonna come back and give you an option on, option three, which is to combine the two years and do something different, but we'll brief you on that Tuesday.
So, the citizens can, if they turn to page 269, it'll be like, I've seen this page before, and I live on Kelly Street, and you still ain't been here. So, we need to acknowledge that and say.
It's not for a lack of trying, Mayor.
Not for a lack of trying. I understand, but I just, I want us to just put it out there, yes, we missed by an entire year. We put it together, and we've come up with another plan. If you live on any of these streets, or if you are in general interested in streets, it will be a presentation next Tuesday. Okay, I have talked a lot. Mayor Protem Nelson, you had many tabs left yesterday. Do you have other things you would like to discuss?
I had many tabs, but I had many answers that were provided that had me, should have, I should have removed a lot of these tabs. I really don't have anything at this time, other than I had some concerns about the org chart, but we can discuss that later on if need be.
Okay, do you wanna do org chart now, or org chart later? I don't care.
Yes.
All right.
Good. I'm concerned about the org chart, because it goes outside in my estimation.
It's page 18.
Beyond the, uh, I'm sorry, it's page 18.
Thank you.
It takes us beyond what the city structure is, and takes us into our community partners and some of our associated agencies. For me to understand the appropriate lines of communication, the lines of authority, the lines of responsibility, I guess would probably be a better term, I'd like to see a separate breakout with the liaison, the county, the city liaison, the council liaison, and put the actual personnel or position that's in charge of the various city departments in play there, as opposed to just being a straight line between the employee and employee line of authority, lines of responsibility to our city partners and to our associated agencies. It is confusing to me, and I'd like to get some clarity on it.
So, this chart is intentional, that it doesn't have people. And the reason for that is, most of the people that look at this don't know nor care who the people are. But they do care about the functionality when we talk about, say, public safety, what's in public safety. Because every city's different, and what might be in public safety in Bastrop won't be what's in public safety in Giddings, won't be what's in public safety in Leander. And so, what I, and the reason I did this is because we ask an. And so, what I, and the reason I did this is because we ask an awful lot of our staff. And so, when people look at James, they see just the police chief. But, if you look under public safety, um, we've got animal control, emergency management, code enforcement, fire, information technology, and police, and those are the functional things that happen under public safety. But, yet, the Bastrop County Animal Shelter is a contract he has to manage because animal control, um, is something that requires that contract because we don't have a shelter. So, we have to acknowledge their partnership because money for that contract would be in public safety. Um, Bastrop County Communications is a county partner that's also a contract that's found in public safety because they do our regional dispatch. Um, Bastrop County Household Hazardous Waste because code enforcement is under public safety. We put household hazardous waste for illegal dumping, and that's a contract we have with the county. James is the, the staff liaison to that contract. Citizens on Patrol is a group of volunteers that we, um, count on to help augment some of the things we do, so that's a relationship. Same thing with Police Chaplains. The Bastrop County Long-Term Recovery Team is, um, integral to our emergency management. And then, the senior center contract falls under him because it's a shelter. So, the things in green are our community partners because that's the budget you would find to find that contract or that stream of money to. The things that are in blue, every one of your boards and commissions requires a level of staff support. So, let's look under planning and zoning that would fall under Matt's domain. The staff liaison for planning and zoning, zoning board of adjustments, and the Historical Landmark Commission fall under the responsibilities of planning and zoning. So, if there's any money associated with those commissions or responsibilities, you'd find it in that budget. So, this was intended to take our open, our, our, our unique situation, because we rely on a lot of folks to help us do what we do, and give the citizens a place to go and find those things. So, that's, that, that's me telling you what it is so that you can help me now understand what it is you've got a problem with, so I can fix it for you.
I don't necessarily want names. I don't think names would, would serve any purpose, but at least positions.
Can you put the name?
Not necessarily names, but positions in there.
So, so, do you want me to do away with this and just put positions, or do you want this to, because it's the second org chart, I, there aren't enough boxes, I've, I've maxed out the boxes on the piece of paper for this one.
I, I understand. I've, I've done org charts forever, but I'd, I'd like to see a position on there. I'd like to separate what the direct report is from a contract management and, and from the liaison site. Perhaps it's different org charts that we can refer back to, refer to boards and commission, refer to contract management.
So, let me ask you this, um, on, say, for instance...
317.
On page what?
317.
No, that's not what I'm looking for.
Oh.
Um, no, I don't. So, if, if you will turn to page 140. If I put an org chart of the various positions in each department where they belong, does that resolve your issue?
You know, I, I, I think that would. I think that provides clarity that's needed. This, this chart is just too extreme. It's just way too much information on there that has no correlation between them.
Yes, sir, because it was not intended to do what you've asked for.
But, I think we need to have that clarity in each one of those that you're pointing out there. I think that would, that would serve the purpose and meet my agenda.
Okay. So, we will leave this one as a guide that's just a reference on where you might find something, and then we'll put the functional job and hierarchy in the departments where you'll find the personnel and the money.
And separate direct report from contract management...
Yes, sir.
And the other trainees.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay, that makes Mayor Protim Nelson happy. How, how's everybody else?
Okay.
Okay. Everybody's okay? Everybody's okay? All right. I'm sorry. Councilmember Jackson, are you changed?
Sorry. Um, if we do the organizational charts in each department, like, in addition to that, I think that should solve it, if that's not too much trouble to do. But, uh, I kinda like the other one, the other chart as well, but...
One, one arrow that I think needs to be different is, right now, if you look at Ethics Commissions, Bastrop Housing Authority, and Community Support Partners, it looks like that reports to you as city manager.
I am the staff liaison to the Ethics Commission. I am the staff liaison.
I don't think we did a liaison, I think the city attorney's the liaison to the Ethics Commission.
Tracy always posts the notices and all of that. It comes out of my office. He may end up, but as far as taking care of the paperwork, and I'm fine putting it under him, but I'm just telling you, it typically ends up in my office, and I'm, I'm, I have been listed on that, but I can take that off.
What I was gonna do was where it's, where it goes to the right and says Boards and Commissions, I was just gonna go to the left and say Ethics Housing Department, because, like, on the Housing Authority, we, I appoint them, they confirm them, and really, we don't do much with them.
Okay.
Right? I mean, I don't think you have a whole lot of, we don't attend their board meetings...
It just ends, it just ends up in my office when she has something to go on the agenda or something like that. So, I, I was accounting for all of them, but I don't care. If you don't want me in charge of them, I will give them to anybody that wants them.
Nah, it's, it's not a big deal. It, it's not a big deal either way.
And Community Partners is in my office, because I do, I personally do the agenda, and I make all of that done, but I can take those two off.
And, and all of the, the community, oh, okay, that's Community Support Partners. That's how you're distinguishing it from the other green boxes, right? It's, because it's the folks that we give Community Support money to.
That's right.
Yeah, okay. Okay. I, I think it's fine. It covers, it's, it's, I don't know how you can get any more boxes on one piece of paper, so...
So, are you saying that you, the Ethics and the Housing Authority will go up to that box next to Board and Commissions? Is that the suggestion? Is that, I mean, I, I kinda...
I'm gonna just delete them.
Okay, because I kinda like the idea of adding them up there because of the, the correlation with the mayor and council for that.
So, so, understand, this chart has nothing to do with y'all. I, I, I don't, this isn't a policy question. This is, y'all have 13 boards that we as staff have to do something with. Because y'all don't do, y'all don't do the support. Y'all do the policy. So, there is a council liaison to every board that offers policy support. But, every agenda that gets posted, we have to post it. Every meeting that gets called, we have to call it. Every agenda packet that gets put together, we have to put it out. Everything you do requires something of us. I'm just acknowledging that this is where all of this goes because there's so much more to what we do than just flushing toilets and running water, and there's only seven of us, or six of us, and so, I've just divvied it up.
Now, that makes perfect, and so, if I'm, if I am a police chaplain, if I'm interested in joining the chamber, this gives me an idea of where to go looking for whatever. That was the intent of it.
That's all that is, yes, ma'am.
Okay. I just thought that since the mayor and council do appoint those boards, those boards and commissions and things, and that it was important to do that, but if you don't want them to do that, that's fine.
I think that's how you were trying to cover the boards and commissions in general, being off to the side of mayor and council.
Yes, I, I didn't want anybody to go, "Well, how come those boards aren't here?" So, anything that...
Tried to account for all of them.
That's right. And it, and, and to your point, it didn't much, but Brandy gets on the agenda because she goes through my office to do it.
Yep.
So, that's why, but if, if it's a problem, I can delete it.
I'm fine. I'm fine. I'm fine. Councilmember Ennis? Everybody, I'm, I'm not trying to call anybody out, I'm just, everybody okay before we move on? Okay, org chart, check. Did you, do you have, you have another one? Okay. You happy?
No, no. I, we're going to the next topic. I had a question on the, um, Emergency Management, and I think it's because we didn't spend it, but I just wanted to just, we're on page 145. Well, in the budget for 2019, it was $34,000, and then your estimate is $5,000, and then it went back to 35. Is that because we didn't spend what we were expecting in the...
So, this is one of those budgets you should flag, and, and anytime the same amount of money is there next year, it means we didn't have a disaster, and we didn't need the money.
Okay. I just wanna make sure that, I figured that's what it was.
So, what, what, what we have budgeted here is, there's always something that comes up, and we just need to anticipate it. And so, this is where, um, Chief Ogel knows that if he has overtime because we've had some windstorm come in, this is where we put it. Um, if we had to buy some additional roll-off dumpsters because we had brush that came out as a result of the windstorm in June, this is where it'd get put. And so, the, the less he spends, the better year we have.
That's what I was trying to focus on, is that we budgeted this, we only had to spend that, so that's what I was trying to bring up. Okay.
And the, the good point of it... To me, the, the operational side that you're taking care of is, if he needs to order the dumpster, he doesn't have to wait for a budget amendment to get an account that has money. He can just do it, and there's a spot, and we move on. And if, God forbid, we have major emergencies in the October through December, and it, and we're burning through it, then you would come with a budget amendment and say, "We need to put some more money in the piggy."
So, that's absolutely correct. What, what, in a situation like this, that gives him enough money until I can get a, a council meeting scheduled in 72 hours, or an hour, depending on how bad the emergency is. But, it gives us a place, and we intentionally set up this division to just further, um, take this one step further. We already have all of the accounting procedures and the documentation set up to meet FEMA requirements for all of the tracking. It's set up in our finance software, and everybody knows the code here, and so, it gives them a pot of money that they're not standing in my office with their hair on fire going, "Okay, now where are we gonna get this money?" We just know this is where it is, and the minute we start getting quotes that exceed this, then we start talking to the mayor, who is the Emergency Management Director, and then we start calling, uh, special meetings, but this is what that's intended for.
Mayor, I wanna make sure she has a lot of fire extinguishers, because her hair is always on fire, according to her.
We may put one in her car. Okay.
I have one more.
No, keep going.
I know this is the penalty question, or in, under, on page 198.
198.
On BAIP, I have a problem with the mission. Um, what is the $50,000 going to contingency?
Um, so, they have, traditionally, I believe, and James can verify this, but traditionally, they've had about $50,000 that they have earmarked for, um, public art, um, and their purchases. In the last year or so, we have been waiting on the Cultural Arts Master Plan, and that is now finalized. It will be on your agenda on September 10th for discussion, and it will come with some form of recommendation from the BAIP. Um, but that has just been allocated, I believe, for art projects.
Unknown, yeah.
Yeah.
At one point, there was a plan, they were trying to, um, gather up money to be able to light the bridge, and there, there's been some other, but, but when I was the liaison for BAIP, the contingency fund was for, if there's a really cool project that comes along, we want to be able to fund it.
Okay.
So, they intentionally set aside some money for that.
And, and we know that they're not gonna spend any money this year, which is why it's zero, so it's just being allocated in 2020 again.
Councilmember Ennis?
Right now, BAIP is in great flux because i- if the, um, master plan, if we accept it and pass it, the whole complexion of the world is gonna change for the arts in this town as well as, uh, BAIP. So, they can't, they're, they're gonna have to hold their horses until we make a decision on the Cultural Arts Master Plan, wouldn't you say that's right, T?
Yes, sir, absolutely.
And so, um, this is kinda, we don't wanna get rid of this money because we may need it for the Cultural Arts, uh, Commission, I mean, the, the whole commission to start getting the program going. So, that's kinda where it stands.
So, actually, they're not gonna spend this whole $124,000, you're saying, until the...
No, I'm not, I'm, I'm, I don't know what they're gonna be spending.
But, they're just gonna hold until that plan is done, kinda?
So, um, it's designated for implementation of the Cultural Arts Master Plan. So, the nice way to translate what, um, Councilmember Ennis is saying is, if the BAIP becomes something else, whatever takes its place, would, this money would be allocated to implement the policy direction that y'all, um, framed for them.
Okay. But, the, the rest of the answer to that question is, number one, remember it's hot funds, so there's only certain things that can be spent on. It can't just, I, we can't turn it into our next favorite project. And number two, when the Cultural Arts Master Plan is finalized, and they come up with a way, whoever they are, of how they would like to spend the money, they have to come back to us before they can spend that money. So, it's, it's, um, bucketed away, but nothing can come out of the bucket till council approves it. Is that correct?
A- as it stands, uh, now, yes, because it's not earmarked for anything specific. So, absent your adoption of a Cultural Arts Master Plan with some direction, there's no, there's no authorization to spend the money that's been allocated.
Okay. I have, well, I'm not gonna say it's my last question.
Say you have another question.
There you go. On 183, just on, I know that the, the Los Fines Arts Center, you know, just like the Opera House and everything, all came and spoke with us, but we're not issuing the full amount they requested. So, my question is, is our, in their request, they had certain things that they were asking for money for. Are we designating certain things that we're, we're willing to fund?
No, ma'am, I'm not willing, I am not willing to get into their business. Um, essentially, they have to operate under the same parameters that the museum and the Opera House is, and that is, they have to stand before you on a quarterly basis and prove they're putting heads in beds, that they're working with Visit Bastrop, and being part of the assets that we leverage and market to bring people to Bastrop. Um, how, and, and, and I would argue some of the things that are in their proposal, they can't do and meet that objective, which is why I'm not willing to get into their, the minutia of their business. Um, the expectation has been set, um, there are checks and balances in the contract. Um, if they meet it and they have no reason to believe they won't, it will be an exciting story, just like the Opera House and, and the Visit, um, uh, the Visitor Center. But, if it isn't, then, um, and they don't meet it, then we'll be sitting here talking about them being in timeout.
Okay. Thank you. I, it, it also seems that, that 85 number is, may not be exact, but it's fairly close to where some of the other major assets started, and it gives them an opportunity, to your point, to, to prove the case, and then if they can, and if they can add additional programs, then we'll review that.
Yes, ma'am, you're exactly right. Um, one, one of the things that's always a tricky place that I find myself is, is defining fairness with no parameters. And so, the Bastrop Opera House and the, uh, museum have been very faithful partners, um, and the last couple of years have just tremendously hit it out of the park. And it seemed, um, punitive to them to just write a check to somebody that's never played for what they wanted, and these guys are out here struggling, um, and it, there just didn't seem to be any equity. So, faced with, I'm not gonna get into minutia, that's where I looked. Eighty-five thousand dollars is meaningful, um, absolutely believe that they will be a great partner for Visit Bastrop, and we've seen what Susan and her team has been able to do. Um, Kay and Lisa and their, their teams are hitting it out of the park. Look so forward to Patricia joining that and being able to do it. So, it seemed reasonable that it was a great investment, and with that, they could do amazing things, but I didn't have to stand before the other two and have to explain myself, if that makes sense.
I totally understand. I was just curious. Mayor Protim Nelson?
Yeah, over the past two years, I, I think we've set some expectations, and they have set some expectations. Those expectations have been met, and I think we're creating an atmosphere for the, the Art Center to meet expectations and to realize their own expectations. So, I, I like the thought process on this. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm glad, the, the more major assets we have, the more tourism we have, it's just, it's, it's a way to, uh, not only increase hot funds, but increase sales tax revenue and other, another way to help, um, add to our ability to maintain the city. Okay. All right. I don't know if you have another one, but you're getting a break. Councilmember Jackson, do you have any questions?
Not at the time.
Well, this is the last of the time for the workshop, so...
No, I don't have any questions.
There we go. Councilmember Peterson, he's a happy, happy man. Councilmember Ennis?
I'm gonna ask.
You gotta lean into the mic.
I'm gonna ask a que-- I don't know why this is. There we go. Uh, I'm gonna ask a question, and city manager, don't throw anything at me.
Hold her, hold her down, James, hold her down.
I'm, uh, I'm still concerned about moving the mowing into hot funds. Have we gotten a legal opinion on that? And could we?
Yes, we can.
Just to protect ourselves?
Yes, sir.
That's my only concern, is that I don't want somebody in Austin coming back and saying, blowing up our whole, you know, situation because of one thing that somebody in Austin looked at and said, "This is a debatable use."
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
If I may.
Please.
You know, there, there, there are nine criteria, from what I've read, relative to utilization of hot funds, and one of them is signage indicating where tourist attractions are, and I think it's incumbent upon us as a, as an entity pushing their tourist attractions, that we maintain that signage as nice as we can, and part of that is landscaping, as far as I'm concerned, and I think, I think it's a viable expense. I did, I did some research after getting, uh, uh, the missive from one of our citizens, and, and, and vetted that quite thoroughly in my, in my mind, I felt very comfortable with it.
Councilmember Jackson?
I will, uh, I guess chime in now, 'cause after getting that missive, as you say, I was a little concerned also, and so I tried to, um, seek some legal advice on that as well, so I'm hoping that we're gonna get some legal advice on that.
The... I, I feel like we are on fairly safe area, and I want us to all realize that if you aren't going to do that, do, is your suggestion that we not mow next year? That we fire somebody so we can mow? That there, I don't know anyplace else where there's a hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars. So, that, that's the other part of it, that, that we need to just, that, there's, that's where we are.
That is exactly where we are. As I said to you last night, I have put there, I have put the mowing there temporarily as a bridge, um, because we need to make some very strategic choices next year, once we understand the full implement, implant, implications of no annexation in the three and a half percent cap. Um, we need to be strategic in the choices that we make, so that we make them right long-term, and not knee-jerk reaction. I think when you make knee-jerk reactions, it damages your credibility in the community, and y'all have been very thoughtful and deliberate, um, in the decisions that you've made against the policy. As I indicated last year, uh, I've put it there because I have nowhere else to put it. So, to the mayor's point, if you aren't comfortable funding it in hot funds, then you either aren't gonna mow, or y'all need to tell me, um, about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, or whatever it is, of cuts you'd like to make.
Let me make myself perfectly clear, I have no problem with it, I'm just wanting to protect our rear end, and if we have a legal opinion on it, we can point back and say, "We had a legal opinion that told us that this was okay to move ahead with," and, now, if Mayor Protem would like to be that legal opinion, we can certainly point him and say, "Our Mayor Protem told us we could do it, so we did it."
No. I, no, my, 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 my comments are directly related to the fact that, 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 from my perspective, I feel, I feel comfortable with it, I, I, I would agree that perhaps a legal opinion would, would, would really verify and confirm our, our thought process on it.
That's my only thought.
And I concur, that's, I mean, it's not that I don't want to have it done either, I just wanna make sure that we're covered.
Okay. Councilmember Ennis, was that your only, um, let's see, hair-burning fire question? You're, you're happy now?
They're all off.
They're all, oh, all those tabs are gone. I'm circling back around to you, friend. Not that you're not all, my friend. Mayor Protem Nelson, do you have anything else?
Well, I, I'm glad you mentioned all the, all the yellow tabs that I had there, and I wanna commend the staff for answering the questions, commend council for asking the questions that I didn't have to ask, that allowed me to take some of those tabs off. The only thing that I want to mention, it's not a question, the metric C's that you put on one fifty-one for performance measures for the Fire Department, whoever came up with that concept and that list should be commended, and that should be copied as, uh, as much as possible by other city departments to determine the productivity of their department. I just, my compliments.
Well, there you go.
My last piece of paper.
Okay. Then my last, I promise, oh, wait, she has one more, I'm gonna let, uh, Councilmember Rogers go, and then I'll have one last. Go ahead, Councilmember Rogers.
Lynda, you probably have the answer to this, 'cause I had emailed you the question. I noticed that on a lot of the requests for the departments, it was for, like, new, new computers, a new iPad, new things, and I, I also know that we have a, a fund for ream, for purchasing vehicles, you know, we put a little bit in there, Tracy talked about earlier, we also have a fund for that, for replacing computer equipments, 'cause you know every ten minutes they're dead, and they're not...
So if you will look on our wish list for November...
Page twelve.
The computer replacement is, um, top of the list.
Sixty-five thousand.
It's sixty-five thousand dollars annually, and we don't have money to do that. Um, it is important, it's, um, scary that we don't have that, but we don't, so that's why I believe it's number one on my list, um, is so we can be able to stay current.
Sure, yeah, in that way, okay.
Um, this, this is the first year I've not been able to fund that. We, we do have a three-year schedule, um, we fund the computers and laptops at three years, our servers at five to seven, um, and so, that's on our list, and then we've got some network challenges that are about seventy-eight thousand dollars that are on the wish list, depending on how, um, the fund balance works out at the end of the year.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to mention, we have started putting some of the servers that we purchased recently in the ver, so that in ten years, or whenever they're supposed to be replaced, those funds will be there, so we've, we've started putting some of the bigger items in the ver, but not the small computer replacement items.
Thank you.
Okay, as Mayor Protem Nelson said, you guys ask awesome questions, and it gives the liaison, it, um, it's very helpful, so, uh, Councilmember Rogers asked the question that is the perfect transition to my last comment, and that is also on page twelve. And when we talk about new permit tracking software, I cannot help but think of the hours each of us has personally spent on the moratorium, the enhanced review permit, building Bastrop, it's page, still page twelve, in the, and it's the first page twelve, it's in her, in her memo.
In the memo.
The, um, thanks for the friends under the granite dome, House Bill thirty-one sixty-seven. The amount of work and the amount of time that we are going to spend Tuesday night, when we do the, read the ordinances, and, um, I've seen the agenda, ladies and gentlemen, and I think we went through individual action item R, it is going to be a long agenda. To have put that much time and effort into it, and not have software to track the permit and know that we're meeting the law, I think is cutting our nose despite our face. I know that there, I'm, I have learned about this thirteenth month and, and the November timeframe, but for me personally, I'm willing to, um, pull those funds from BP and L, I'm, I, I'm asking you to relook through everything. My concern with waiting till November is, in November, we should have our building Bastrop codes in place, we've got developers standing in line, I don't, we've done so much work, I don't wanna be ready to go, and then it's like, "Oh, but wait, in four more weeks, we'll have our software, and then we'll have people trained." I feel like this is the, we, we said we were gonna do it, as the city manager likes to say, "Done right and done well," we've, we've done that with design code rodeos and pop-ups and everything else, so I, I would like council to consider that, um, we say that this is not a wish list item, this is a must-have item, and direct the city manager to come back and tell us, make an offer of something else to cut, or, like I said, utilize BP and L or whatever, and I think also, since it's on wish list, I don't know if you've got the software identified, we might need to, y'all may deserve an opportunity to do some research to know exactly what that number's gonna be, but I, I think that's a must-have and not a wish list.
I agree.
Which item again is that, again, I mean...
New permit tracking software.
Um, Mayor, I appreciate the support, and what I would offer is, is if, um, you'll let us, uh, or authorize this, we will do a loan from BP and L, and if in the thirteenth month, um, we don't need it, we'll just transfer the money back to BP and L, and that will help bridge the gap of, do we have the money or not? If we do, um, we'll have General Fund put it back, if not, then BP and L can loan the General Fund the money until we do.
So, council, Councilmember Ennis, what do you think?
Totally supportive.
Councilmember Peterson?
That's music to my ears.
Councilmember Jackson?
I must have.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yeah, as Councilman, uh, Ennis brought up last night, it, this is a priority, and we not only need to do this right, we need to do this right now, if we're going to comply with the state mandate, as well as our own, uh, priorities, so, yes.
Okay, that was my last question.
This isn't a question.
Oh, oh, okay, go ahead.
Ah, one of those. Could we re, could we rewrite the, "This budget will raise more revenue," so it is clearer that how much is actually being raised? Does it have to say that like that?
That's why it's in quotes.
That is a state mandated, uh, format. Has to be written that way, has to be, has to be in the budget that way, and y'all have to approve it that way.
That's why those are the, that's the one item that Tracy says you have to make your motion like this, we have no choice.
You can't say, "The budget will raise more revenue from property taxes than last year's budget, um, uh, existing property by this amount, and new property..."
That language is straight out of the, the code.
I will no wonder.
And, and they hold you personally accountable for it, they make us do a record vote, and you must acknowledge that's what you're doing.
Now, to Councilmember Ennis's point, is there anything against the legislative directive that keeps us from adding a sentence that says, "One hundred and eighty-three thousand, four hundred and sixty-six came from existing, and one hundred and twenty-four three hundred and fifteen came from new," and it's just an extra sentence on there?
That would do it, if we can do it. No.
We, we, we won't ask Alan, I, I...
I know, I don't wanna get anybody in trouble, but if we can provide more information...
No, the, the truth of the matter is, we publish as required.
I understand.
And I don't know that this form is altered. I am happy to, um, add another page beside it that offers some explanation, but this, this sheet is kinda like Moses brought off the mountain, it's, it's serious business.
Every budget I've ever gone back and seen, I've always done the math and have it written out myself for how much came from existing, 'cause they all have exactly this sentence.
Yeah, but any citizen that reads this doesn't read it the way we're...
Yeah, and the legislators don't care.
So, so the way that I would offer this, is that we'll leave it the way it is, but we'll have a page beside it that, that offers some clarity, so we check the box of the state law, but we translate the meaning of the law. That I think we can do.
Perfect, thank you, ma'am.
And I, I quit doing the eagle eye on the, um, performance measures, 'cause I knew you guys were gonna do a set on that, I found a couple of places where you, um, didn't make the, didn't make the correction to this year's average home price, it, I, I, you guys are clearly cutting and pasting, and you haven't completely made it through, so...
Before, before we get through, I'll get your budget.
Okay, okay.
Alright. I just wanted to say thank you for being patient with all my questions, and answering them very clearly for me.
Now, I think, uh, Councilmember Peterson, what do you think about, feel like you know this budget as well as anyone you've ever talked about?
Yes, and I wanna commend the manager and her cabinet for doing such an excellent job of putting this together in such a short time.
Look at her notes. Um, I am looking around, and I, we still don't have any, uh, citizens, so, uh, Mr. Goldsmith had indicated that he may not be able to make it, so I'm, uh, we are visiting item three, citizens' comment, for the second time, which leads us, Councilmember Peterson, to item number four.
Item number four, our motion to adjourn.
It is seven fifty-four, and we are adjourned. Thank you, staff, thank you very, very much. Good night.